Hello. Good evening, welcome to this November ten, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Mansfield Board of Education. I am Kathy Ward, the board chair. I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven P M. Jill, would you call the roll, please?
Susanna Everett.
I am just here.
Martha Kelly.
Here.
Edith Allison.
Here.
David Latrico.
Here.
April Moran.
Here.
Catherine Paulus.
Present.
Jeanette Picard.
Here.
And Kelly Zimmerman.
Here.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Edith, would you mind reading the mission statement, please? Thank you.
It is the mission of the Mansfield Public Schools in partnership with the Mansfield community to ensure that each and every child develops the knowledge, skills, and dispositions essential for civic engagement and personal excellence in learning, life, and work within our local and global community.
Great, thank you very much, Edith. I just have a few board management requests before we begin. Just a reminder that it's a violation of FOIA regulations to use our cell phones at the table. So if you have an urgent issue, if you could go out in the hall, it'd be greatly appreciated. And in the interest of time, I'm requesting that we all limit to two our comments on a particular discussion item. We should all be able to verbalize our thoughts in that amount of time. No more ten P M adjournments if we can help it. Thank you. That brings me to approval of minutes of October thirteen, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Would you like to second, David?
I will second.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any corrections? Are there any objections to approving the minutes? Any abstentions? All right, those are approved, thank you. That brings us to our first opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to approach the board, please come on up. You have five minutes, please state your name and address, and be advised that we don't engage in discussion, but if there is an issue that we need to address, we promise we will get to it, to the right party.
Hi, this is Jeremiah Amat, one hundred Wormwood Hill Road. Thank you for giving this time to discuss what's on our mind. As I'm sure you know, the first two superintendent family advisory meetings topics of concern were close to ninety-five percent discussion regarding the new bathroom configurations. This tells you how important to our community this has been. Our families should have been a consideration to the building committee when designing the bathroom configurations. It was noted during our meeting that the bathroom discussion was not expected to be the main topic, and it would be nice to have been discussing topics like the exciting excitement of the new school. I did leave the meeting feeling that we were able to openly discuss our thoughts, and I hope that this meeting too will result in the same mutual respect. We do appreciate and value the Board of Ed members who came to the first two advisory meetings. At our last meeting, we asked Superintendent Dart to invite a building committee member to discuss the decision process for the bathrooms. We would also like to invite Kathy Ward to the December sixth family advisory meeting. We would also like the documentation minutes provided to us of the building committee discussion and decisions regarding the design of the bathroom. We understand that the building committee was, has devoted many hours and shouldered a lot of responsibility for our community, community. We certainly respect that. Much research and thought went into the planning and designing of the new school. Endless communication with teachers, I'm sure, was addressed to suit the needs of the classroom and shared workspaces in the building. With that said, communication with our school families to gain knowledge of what is important to them when it comes to sensitive topics was lacking. Having meetings open to the public at four P M does not exactly help working families to attend. Perhaps a communication about sensitive topics could have gone out in advance so families could make arrangement to attend, or a survey sent out via email could have been sent out to the community. I don't believe decisions such as colors of walls or flow of school would be as important to families, but the decision that was made to combine male and female toilet rooms is indeed a sensitive item of concern for our families. After all this discussion and helpful solutions, our family is still not entirely comfortable with this situation. As was explained to us, there may be children as young as six who identify with a different gender who may feel uncomfortable about using gender-specific bathrooms. We would like to know what went, what thought went into children who don't feel comfortable with using bathrooms with mixed genders. Children who identify with a different gender are given options to use either non-gender-specific bathrooms or gender-specific. The children who are uncomfortable are only given gender-specific, but even that would lend the possibility of mixed gender usage. I understand there is a possibility of using the nurse's office and our pre-K kindergarten rooms that have single-user bathrooms, although that is an option that can be inconvenient and uncomfortable for the student. So I want to thank you for your time, and we also want to mention a special thank you to Principal Lauren Rodriguez for sitting down with us and listening to our concerns even during her busy schedule. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeremiah. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Please come up.
My name is Ming and I live at twenty-four Adeline Place in Mansfield. As a mother of two boys, I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to join the meetings of the family advisory team. At our first meeting, I learned that there would be no gender-specific bathrooms in the new Mansfield Elementary School, and the decision of the design was made by the building committee. I was unprepared for this news and was wondering why the needs of those children and families would prefer gender-specific bathrooms were not included in the design of the new public school. It is simply against the spirit of equity and inclusion that so much emphasis has been put on lately. At the second meeting, however, I learned that there will be options for gender-specific bathrooms for the third and fourth graders, but not for kids of lower grades. We didn't know why the children of the lower grades were left out. The messages we have got so far are confusing. Since it's just a couple months away from the opening of the new school, I'm wondering if there is a clear description for the distribution of the different types of the bathrooms to send to parents. Bathroom time is a very private time of our daily life. For young kids, even with much training, it's not unlikely for them to pull down the pants before closing the door. Unfortunately, it seems that most families still do not know this change to bathrooms, which means they are unable to prepare and give feedback. This certainly caused anxiety in parents like me and makes us to wonder if there are other changes underway in the school system parents generally do not know about. I heard that there were discussions going on for changes in the school calendar about holidays. As changes like this are talked about, it is important that parents be informed early on and hopefully in a clear and straightforward way with important changes highlighted, since most parents probably do not have the time to do much research. We are living at a very challenging time. After experiencing the stress and unexpected changes that came with the pandemic, our kids might need stability and consistency in their environment more than ever before. As we think about what changes are meaningful and urgent, it will be also beneficial for us to reflect how to prepare our children for the many challenging problems that they are going to face tomorrow, many of which are existential, such as climate change, the pandemic, and the world that desperately needs peace and order. Last time I came to the Board of Education meeting was many years ago. As a parent, I went with a group of school principals from China who were visiting the schools here. After their visit, I conducted an interview with them. Just like me, these principals had great admiration for what they observed at the schools here and about American education at that time. This country is very lucky to have great founding ideas and values, which have once helped the educational system to produce not only the most talented individuals in the world, but also individuals with great character and a sense of social responsibility. Instead of taking away the traditional holidays from the school calendar, I think you should celebrate your tradition and values just like other countries would do to theirs. I believe there's much in the past that we should treasure and learn as we are thinking about changes for tomorrow. Last, I want to thank you for your efforts to work for the well-being of our children and to stand firm in the important issues that matter to our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ming. Is there anyone else who would like to approach the board? That brings us to communications, Jill.
Mansfield Public Schools was selected and honored by the Bonnie B. Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communications this year under the C A B, Connecticut Association of Boards of Education.
Wonderful. I think we have Margaret Chady to, to thank. Thank you. I think this is the second year, correct? Yes. Excellent job and the staff. Thank you very much. All right, are there any additions to the present agenda?
I would like to have an executive session to discuss board matters.
So you would like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to have an executive session to discuss board matters.
And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We need two-thirds vote. I think two-thirds is six. All in favor? Fine, but we will add that to new business.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to committee reports. The Finance Committee met on November eight. We discussed two items. The first was pandemic pay funding and appropriation. At its April eleventh meeting, the Town Council voted to appropriate transfer funds to recognize employees in the town, the Mansfield Board of Ed, and Region nineteen for their work efforts and assumed risks incurred in the course of their official duties during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. This will provide a one-time pandemic bonus to eligible employees in the amount of four hundred dollars. Our Human Resources Director, Michelle Beers, determined two hundred and fourteen board employees are eligible for a total expenditure of eighty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. Our charge is to accept this money and to further appropriate these funds for the one-time payment of four hundred dollars to eligible employees. It's the Finance Committee's recommendation that we accept and appropriate, and we'll vote on this via the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions about that? I was a little vague. Edith?
What was the criteria for qualifying for the four hundred dollars?
I got that somewhere. On September twelve, twenty twenty-two, the Town Council approved premium pandemic pay for employees who met the following criteria: either full or part-time status employed for at least six consecutive months between March sixteen, twenty twenty, and May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. An active Town of Mansfield employee status as of July one, twenty twenty-two, or part-time and identified as performing a role that placed them in potentially hazardous situations during the period referenced above. Is that okay? So it's what your status was during those time periods. Yes.
I have a question. So the food service director, is that our previous food service director who gets that or our current?
It would have been the former.
Okay, good. And the assistant director of facilities, is that because he is considered a board employee?
That's correct.
Okay. And there's only two nurses noted here, and I know we had a lot more nurses at the time.
They weren't eligible to do attendance.
So they weren't, they, they weren't working during that time?
Not in continuous service.
Okay. And so the pair of professionals, the secretary of staff and the teachers, is that the same thing that it's it doesn't go to all of the teachers and them, it just goes to?
That's correct. So teachers who were teaching remotely would not have been eligible or those who were not in service. So we had some teachers during, when we returned, did not return to full service in person.
Kathy, can we get a copy of those dates? Thank you.
Can you make, not now, but can we get, okay. Any other questions? All right, as I said, we're going to vote on that via the consent agenda. The committee also reviewed the quarterly financials ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The ECS Cost Sharing Grant for Fiscal Year twenty-two, twenty-three is budgeted at nine and a half million. No changes, payments to the estimates have been received from the state at this time. The Board of Education has no expenditure concerns. We're anticipating to remain on budget for special education. The Food Services Cafeteria Fund has no concerns. A new, much-needed upgraded software program is being put in place, which will greatly improve efficiency with record-keeping and financial controls. Grant money and federal funding has helped maintain a healthy fund balance. Our Health Insurance Fund has a very solid fund balance and is right in line with our budget. And as always, you can view the Student Activity Funds for each school in your packet. The committee recommends the board approve the quarterly financials dated September thirty, twenty twenty-two via the consent agenda. Martha?
Just refresh my memory, we're still doing free lunches, and that ends on?
We've not set that date, so a requirement of smart funding is that we notify families with at least thirty days and that the smart funding or coverage for universal meals, that would be breakfast and lunch, cannot end in the middle of a month, it has to end at the end of the month. So we still have plenty of funds and we anticipate at least several more months of covering universal feeding.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? That brings us, oh, yes.
Just curious, when are we going to be combining Goodwin, Southeast and Vintance Funds into one unit?
I asked that question, I don't recall the answer.
I don't recall the answer either, and so I think that we'll have to work on looking at reviewing all the funds, the Finance Committee, we're going to take a look at all of our Student Activity Funds, and I forget the Special Service Line account, but the Dorothy C. Goodwin account, and there's other ones that we'll take a look at. So we'll go through the Finance Committee.
I was actually talking about the, the ones that are listed for, you know, for school, and I don't think Dorothy Goodwin is actually part of the.
It's not, no, I thought you were referring to, to that one.
No, no, I'm just talking about their, the Student Activity Funds where each school has a certain amount of money, some more than others, but we're all at school now, so.
Right. So we'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Edith, do you want to talk about Transportation Committee?
There was a Transportation Committee meeting scheduled for November seventh, but it was canceled for technical reasons, I guess, because of
Scheduling.
The scheduling, and it has not been rescheduled as of this time. Peter will be covering transportation issues in his report later.
That's correct. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Edith. That brings us to Information, Presentations, and Actions. Superintendent Report.
Good evening, everyone. It is always an honor to see you and meet, but more importantly, to know that our work is collective work that is focused on ensuring that we lift and live our six core beliefs. They're bookended with leading with equity and growing our educators, but the stuff in between is pretty cool and pretty dynamic, so developing the whole child, ensuring active learning, building partnerships, and preparing global citizens. You'll see in this presentation tonight that I've started to code them to our code beliefs, our core beliefs, rather, because I think it is important that each meeting that we have, when I talk about our work, that I show that through line of how we are actualizing our mission statement and core beliefs. So as Jill shared, we are very excited that we've been recognized again, second year in a row by C A B for our communications. And our communications is a way that we build partnerships. It is super important. In fact, we heard from two families that have requested more information, and we will take that to heart to make sure that we find better ways to engage our families to share information that's relevant, and so I applaud Margaret Chady, but a team of people who also worked on lifting up our work and sharing. So I know Louis, I think, is in the back room, Candace Morrell, we had Carly Payne and, and others helping to lift up some key actions and information. You have with you right now, if you want to take a look at it, just some of these artifacts that you can take with you, we'll be putting them on display at the C A B Conference later this month. But you'll see the Community Newsletter that we produce at least three times a year. And we're working on that right now. Margaret has been putting final touches, we're editing, hopefully putting it out later in the month. The Community Newsletter really is a great outreach effort to build partnerships, especially with families who are not directly connected with our schools. These are the taxpayers and community members that often don't have the electronic connections via student, and so we mail this out, and it's kind of old school, but really new school in the sense of thinking of how to best connect with families, share stories and images that capture the essence of what we're doing each and every day. You also have a couple printouts. Let's take a look at the, the Tech Tip Tuesday printouts. So Karen Lefave was our first technology integrationist, Louis Goffinay was the second, and now we are moving that position from a grant-dependent person into the general budget due to your actions. And so Hope Mahalan is now our third, maybe third and final tech integrationist, who's in kind of in a permanent position. But Karen started to do this, and Louis quickly picked up on it, sharing every Tuesday with staff members the latest, greatest in a clever, authentic, engaging way to share so many different technology tips and, and developments that are relevant to classroom teachers. It certainly caught the eye of C A B, and I know that we all looked forward to getting that email and learning in a very quick glance something new that we could try, and I know staff look forward to this because they would find these quick little tidbits that were very relevant, and they would often try it that very day. So that was great. And then you just have a couple, it's a front-to-back handout from the Witness Stone Project website. The website is more interactive, so it was hard to print this out, but Jill tried to capture two elements of the art projects, the collages, and on the backside, the poetry. Again, you know, when we think about how we communicate now, there's this wonderful blend of online interactive websites, but there's also sometimes that print copy, old-school newsletter that reaches out. So we will continue to explore and, and exploit in a good way all the ways to reach out to our families, to our staff members. And we know, Margaret, that we're after the trifecta, maybe year three, and hopefully we'll, we'll submit new projects. So we're thinking about how we present our budgets and, and how we lift other projects. I wanted to share other communications with you. If you haven't checked out our website, please do so, because we've spent a lot of time thinking about how to capture in images, in videos, and streamline how we share information, minimizing the number of clicks and being intuitive, so families and community, community members, and even those who are interested in our work. In fact, many of the folks that we interviewed this summer for the various positions all complimented us on our website. They talked about the videos, they talked about the information that they could find. We also provided tonight our family handbook, which is going through some various revisions. When we look at the handbook, some of the language is very board policy-driven. It is not family-friendly. And so we're going to take a deeper dive next summer, but we started to do a little bit of the work thinking about what is most important to our families, how to put that front and center and make it easier to navigate. You may notice that we don't have the forms in the handbook, and that's because we're migrating to a more authentic system using online fillable forms that connects directly with Power School. And so while we always support our families with forms, in fact, we printed them out and sent them home under a separate cover, having them printed in the handbook simply just made that a more expensive project and wasn't really useful when we think about how schools push out information that's important that they collected. So we, we still provided the forms, but we just did it in a different way. Martha?
Do all of our families have printers or access to printers?
No, I'm sure they don't. I don't know for a fact. But the online forms would allow them to fill it out using their device like a smartphone, a computer, a tablet. And again, we would always offer any support to families. Because we use school messenger and electronic means to communicate, our schools know the families that need that kind of support, and we're always there to help them out. So it is not unusual to have a staff member fill out a form for a family when they need that kind of support, to print something out, to send home the form, or to offer the link or the, the online tool.
Thank you.
Susanna?
I know this is a huge undertaking, like revamping this family handbook, but I appreciate that you're thinking about it. It does feel very, you know, the word truancy is in large letters on page three. So it's nice to, I appreciate, again, I know that is, it's still, some of this information is necessary to share with families, but it's, it's not family-friendly, so.
It isn't, and we paid attention to, first of all, looking at it from an equity lens, starting to translate and, and consider how to best do that to support families that don't speak English, also making the language gender-neutral through the handbook, and so we will continue to work on that and think about how to best convey the board policies, but in, in layman's terms. Catherine?
Did you say that the forms are on Power School? Or?
And I will show that to the board at another. The, so, and I will show that to the board at another date, so it's not quite ready. We're migrating many of our forms and our enrollment forms to a system through Power School.
Well, I hope Power School has improved in the last five years because it was very difficult to navigate, very difficult.
It has, it has.
You touched upon this, but I was curious as to what you were doing for multilingual families.
Yeah. So, uh, to be honest with you, it is, uh, labor intensive and very expensive. If we were to give that handbook out, we had a quote of about $10,000 for one language. So that doesn't feel very sustainable to us. And so we've got to think differently about how to support families, uh, what technology tools are available, uh, and then prioritizing what is it that is most needed and what languages. So we're thinking the, you know, the top languages that are spoken in our community typically is English, Spanish, Arabic, um, and Mandarin. Uh, but there's a ton of other languages. And so we want to be sensitive to that. And so the technology pieces, uh, may be more strategic for the quick translation and then helping people connect in a native language. We would use the language line to then further help families navigate, uh, our information. Catherine?
Um, in the homework section of this, uh, that, which I always found very helpful. But I know that parents have commented that sometimes teachers think that they're entitled to that full amount of time. How is a good way to make it so that, you know, when a child has four or five classes, and I'm talking mostly at the middle school, that the, uh, homework assignments are equitable?
Yeah, uh, to be honest with you, I was tempted to cut that whole section out.
I would love it if you did.
Yeah, same here. And I think our, our leaders.
Homework too.
Uh, it feels, uh, a little outdated. It's not relevant to 21st century learning, project-based learning. It's not how students work and it's certainly not how teachers think on a day-to-day basis. We're not giving homework for the sake of homework. And we know it's far more fluid in terms of the types of assignments that are more authentic. Some require, uh, more extended time. But we also are mindful that it's super important that we provide time to have kids work on our watch, so to speak. So imagine going into a reading class, you want to see kids reading, right? You don't want to send them home to read, even though that is important. So, you know, uh, it's a great point. We could spend all night talking about it. There are some families that will never agree and, uh, want more homework. And then there's some families that don't want any homework. We know that it's important that we engage kids, uh, throughout the day and, um, throughout their experience with, uh, Mansfield Public Schools. But it doesn't have to be a prescribed amount of time like you, you raised.
Thank you.
Thank you for raising that up. Um, so again, communications is how we build partnerships. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeanette.
I have a question about the revisions to the handbook. Are teachers going to be involved in those revisions?
We'd like to work on it in the summer, so I think that's a great point. Uh, and I'll turn that to my leadership team to how to best do that. But I, I think it's wise if we do include our families, uh, I mean, our teachers and even our families in that. Uh, and so, uh, I'm, I'm thrilled, uh, that we had two families, uh, here today. The Family Advisory and the Diversity Equity Inclusion Teams are strategic parts of my leadership. Uh, whether we agree or disagree, whether we have hard conversations, whether we celebrate or, or we ask questions, we must engage our families. That's the only way we're going to build partnerships. And so, um, the families that spoke today were, uh, one, uh, particular area of engagement. But the Diversity Equity Inclusion Team is another way that we've engaged our families in lifting up various, uh, types of work. So the Diversity Equity Inclusion Team, uh, which, uh, met recently. Uh, we have one team looking at how we support inclusive facilities. Uh, they'll be looking at welcoming schools training, which really thinks about how do we make sure that our buildings, our schools, are family friendly for all families from the moment they pull in, to their entrance into the school and to their access of information. So we were talking about communication is, is one of them. Uh, also you heard a family talking about calendars. So we're asking the very same question that the, that Min, uh, brought up. How do we honor, uh, all the culturally relevant traditions of our district? Uh, we have, uh, an amazing amount of traditions and, and relevant events. How do we as a district honor them, uh, recognize them, create safe spaces for them? But also how do we have a school calendar that engages our kids in consistent amounts of days in, uh, in their seats in schools? Um, so I've turned that question to the DEI team, to the advisory team. We're looking at different calendars, different ways of doing that. Um, and, uh, I look forward to engaging the board in looking at some examples, uh, and eventually looking at a proposed calendar for our district.
Um, can I just interject something about calendars? Cause I have brought this up before, but I have had several people throughout the years talk to me about how our calendar is not at all aligned with Yukon's calendar, Yukon's calendar. And as that is one of the biggest employers in the region, it creates a lot of childcare conflicts when parents, um, have a different schedule like that. So if you can just add that into something that they look at and consider, I would really appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I know people have talked about, especially the spring break in, in March. The other challenge is being regional, uh, and knowing that we play in the sandbox with other school districts in, uh, Region 19. So we, we, we look at that total picture, but point well taken.
Region 19 has been a big issue too. So, yeah.
Yeah.
And not only schools in our region, but we have teachers who live in Coventry. We have teachers who live in Tallinn. To, and, and I know that we did at one time try to get a, a, a uniform ca- uh, calendar that was actually, uh, state assigned East, East Con to do it. And I'm not really sure why it ever got taken away because it actually did seem to work pretty well.
Right. And, uh, East Con and Area Districts still work together. I've had several meetings, uh, sharing calendars. And so we're doing our best to do that. There are just, we love local control. Uh, and so there are local, uh, uh, asks and, and issues that come up that make that a little bit challenging. But, uh, when we look at, uh, the winter break, the spring breaks, we're doing our best to be mindful to at least share. Uh, it doesn't mean every district does the same thing, but you're right. The state did have, uh, some legislation in there. They backed away from it, but it is super helpful when we look at the regional area. Uh, the Family Advisory Meeting, so I spoke about that as well. Uh, and again, I will continue to do that. Our next one is December 6th. Board members are always welcome to attend. It is a open meeting to all community members, uh, especially our families. Uh, and it is an agenda-less meeting so that, um, we get a sense of what people want to talk about. So you heard from families talking about the, uh, non-gender specific, uh, toilet rooms. Uh, and that's what this meeting is about. And so I'm thrilled to hear concerns. Um, it, it means that we need to think about it. We need to respond to it. Um, but we've talked about other things like just school climate, uh, and the safety of students, transportation, enrollment, uh, health reports such as COVID. So I will continue to do this. Uh, and I'm just so proud of the families that attend. There's a strong sense of norms of, we might not always agree. We might talk about things that are hard. We might talk about things that can't be easily resolved, but we can talk. Uh, and, uh, anyone who's attended those meetings, I hope have walked away felting that, uh, having a feeling of being valued, listened, uh, and supported by a community of people who have chosen to gather with them. Catherine?
Peter, when is the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Meetings? Like the calendar?
The next one, thank you for asking that. Next one is, uh, November 29th. And I'll be sure to put those in my weekly updates to the board. So you have a running calendar of those dates.
Would, will they go on the, um, board, whatever it's called? Where we break down the, all the committee meetings and stuff like that?
It, it won't because it's not a board committee, uh, but I'll be sure to put it in my updates to the board each Friday. So, uh, thank you, Edith, uh, for, um, giving the transportation, uh, update. Um, so just more good news that the more we pay attention to it, uh, the better things are getting. It's not perfect, but, uh, vastly improved, uh, each week and certainly from, uh, the first week of school. So, uh, continued improvement in ride times. And so number one, uh, I want to thank the board for supporting the MOU. It has clearly had an impact on driver attendance. Um, we hear of strong, um, uh, results in terms of driver training and onboarding new drivers. Uh, and so that has certainly had an impact, if not just in morale boosting and supporting our current drivers. Um, we have rerouted some of the Goodwin-Vinton runs. So instead of doing the typical Vinton to Goodwin, uh, we'll start at Goodwin and do a reverse run to Vinton. Uh, it makes sense. Uh, it's not as easy as you think. And it took us a while to work with M and J and to work with, uh, Lauren and Becky and her staff, uh, to make sure that, uh, the staggered start and end times of those two buildings, were aligned to those changing routes. Um, and so it was a bit challenging. Again, it's not perfect, but it has shortened the ride times for students. And, you know, that's an interesting point. When we think about transportation in terms of what's best for kids, uh, it really changes the dynamic of that. And sometimes we are a bit challenged with how to shorten that ride time to get our students home quickly. Um, we are starting the routing of, uh, the new, uh, MES building. So, uh, I will go through the Transportation Committee when we're ready to start vetting, uh, those, uh, routes. But just know that we're going to do a careful deep dive with each and every run. We'll do some field trials with that, uh, and, uh, we will be sure to share them with families, uh, well in advance so that, uh, if there are adjustments in ride times, uh, with pickup or drop off, that our families are aware of that ahead of time. Uh, and then the last, uh, exciting news is our My View app. Uh, shout out to Jamie Russell, uh, and his team and Candace. We are ready to start to work on a rollout plan to share a, um, an app with our families that will allow them to track their child's bus. It's a very cool app. I've been, uh, piloting and, and trying it myself. You can drop various pins on a map, so your phone will, will ping when the bus is nearby. And so, um, we're going to share videos and tutorials. We're going to, uh, have a network of support so families don't get frustrated. It's a fairly easy app, but there are some things that you'll need to think about before using it. It's not just something that you, uh, download and, and it does everything for you. You're going to have to think about your child's bus. And, um, we know that cell coverage isn't perfect, so it's not going to be always real time. So we're encouraging families to think about, maybe you set up, uh, the, the alert, for a drop that's, uh, two, uh, roads down from you. Or maybe you want the alert, uh, for when the bus leaves your child's school, because then you can time that's about a 20-minute ride from the school. So we're going to share all of those things. Uh, we're going to also share some of the limitations that we, uh, have discovered. Um, but we're excited about it and we, uh, are thrilled that it actually, uh, ends up being the company Zonar, which is the company that, uh, owns the GPS units that are actually on the bus. So excited about that. Susanna?
Just a quick question. How are we doing with, um, driver availability? I know that's been something.
Uh, it has improved. Uh, and so, um, we have had very, very few delayed buses. Uh, we've not had to collapse bus runs. From time to time, that will be a challenge if a driver is out. We've had some delays due to accidents and rerouting, doing a lot of wood cutting in, uh, in Mansfield. And that has created some challenges. Um, but, uh, again, due to the MOU, I think, right after that, we saw a dramatic improvement in the number of, uh, drivers that we have. Martha?
Excuse me, uh, did I understand you said you were using some of the old system of the G, old GPS?
Yes.
I don't understand.
Yep.
We've got a new one or we're using the old one? How, how are the interfacing?
It's a great question. So, uh, in our pre, in our current contract, in the previous one, um, we require the buses to have GPS units. And so those units are already on the buses and they were produced by a company called Zonar. Uh, and, uh, so the buses had them already. What we didn't have was a family app or program that would help a family track the bus and log into that GPS. The GPS unit really was just using a system of cell and, and satellite, uh, to help locate the bus, but it wasn't family friendly. It was only being used by M and J Bus Company. And we could log in to see the bus, but it was not a family-friendly environment. You couldn't use your phone. Uh, it, it, it was pretty complicated. The My View app simplifies that, so you can use any cellphone, tablet, computer. Uh, and that's the, the end user product. And that actually ended up being fairly inexpensive.
So this is bus-specific.
That's correct.
Family on, is on bus eight. They'll just somehow plug in bus eight and find out the route bus eight is on.
Right. That's right.
Thank you.
And they could plug in for the elementary or the middle school. Uh, or if they, you know, were babysitting or they had a friend, they could plug in as many buses as they want, uh, to track.
So if your child is going to somebody else's house, you could plug in to know when your child arrived from school to that person's house?
Yes.
Just not your, oh, great.
Yeah.
Have we been tracking student ridership and have we noticed a difference in those numbers?
Uh, we have not. That's a great question and that's something we can look at. But it does make me think about, um, how we route. And we know that we support transportation for all of our students, but we know that all of our students don't ride the bus. And so one thing that, uh, perhaps the board can think about and the Transportation Committee can think about is having more of a formal kind of opt-out. Um, because there are some families that will never use the bus and it would be really nice if we had that. Uh, so we didn't have to route the bus. It would simplify it. Um, and then we know that some families use the bus sometimes and that's okay. And then some families use the bus all the time. If we knew that ahead of time, and I think that with our new, uh, system of collecting data and fillable forms using Power School, we'll get better accurate data if we ask families upfront. You know, are you going to use the service? If so, then we'll, we'll route you. But if not, then there's a significant number of students and families that we won't have to worry about. Um, but that goes to your question about ridership. That does change from day to day. And we should be prepared that with more efficient runs, w- we probably will see an uptick in ridership.
Mm-hmm. If that's, if the form you're talking about is something that could be done before finalizing the routes for the new elementary school location, that would be really valuable as well. Because I know that our commitment is that ridership, rider time will not increase. But I think, think that would help to eliminate any, uh, complications.
Yeah. It also would help us advocate for smaller buses and more fuel-efficient buses. Uh, you probably have seen some of our bus runs where we're riding one of the larger buses and maybe a handful of kids on them. Um, that, that doesn't align to our core values of sustainability. Uh, and so, uh, you know, often we have those large buses because what if everyone rode the bus? Um, and so if we had a system and we had families that were okay with opting out, uh, it, it might help us, uh, advocate for that. So, uh, tomorrow's Veterans Day. Um, we are excited, uh, to lift and honor our veterans. And, um, uh, I just wanted to share a little bit about what's happening in our buildings tomorrow. So there'll be various assemblies, uh, honoring our veterans. Uh, the middle school will be presenting gifts to, uh, veterans, uh, that have been invited to attend. You're seeing a keychain that, uh, students in, uh, Technology Education, uh, made for, uh, the veterans. There's a Red Cross war cake that Nora Dickinson from the Life Consumer Science Program made. Uh, I had to read about what a Red Cross war cake is. Um, I'm not so sure I would like it, but it's a cake that was designed, uh, to hold up, uh, knowing that back in, uh, the world wars, you would, uh, mail this cake, uh, uh, and it would be, um, enjoyable on the other end. So it was a bit of a fruitcake, I think. Um, but students made it, uh, and it sounded like they enjoyed, uh, the experience. Um, but just know that our vets, uh, and students will be engaged in, uh, learning about Veterans Day, honoring veterans, understanding and appreciating what it means through musical performances. Many of our elementary school students will be writing letters and cards, uh, and engaged in read-alouds, articles and activities that lift up. Um, this is a great model, by the way, and I think that when we think about Juneteenth, uh, we, we think about, uh, having a day off from school isn't always the way that we honor and recognize a celebration. And, uh, we were talking about the calendar. That's gonna be an important consideration, right? That having a day off doesn't always mean, uh, immediately we think it's important or that we lift it up in celebration. So we'll talk more about that when we see the calendar, um, options that we have. Catherine?
Uh, two things I would like to comment on. I'd like to wish the Marine Corps a happy birthday because it is their birthday today. So any Marines in our town, happy birthday. And the second thing is, is, uh, last, uh, Friday, I was invited to a veterans' luncheon. As I have a husband who's a, a combat veteran. And they had the walls lined with cards that were made by our school children. And, um, we were all told to take one and I left mine at home, but it's just such a nice touch, such a nice touch. And I just wanted to appreciate, show my appreciation to all the schools that did that.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, my dad was, uh, served 25 years in the US Army, two tours of duty in Vietnam and Korea. Uh, I was an Army brat and my dad always, uh, told people that he had to work on Veterans Day. Uh, and, uh, you know, it was kind of a ribbing. Um, but I think he'd be pretty proud, uh, to see how, uh, schools have really shifted the practice of how we think about veterans, how we honor them. Uh, because it is truly amazing, uh, when you think about what the families and, and the men and women, uh, what they have, uh, uh, done for our countries. So, that's great. Uh, wanted to shift and, and I want to invite, uh, Principal Larry Barlow up. Um, this, uh, connects with our, uh, conversation around communication. We, uh, have partnered with our IT department and are taking advantage of technology to share things. And I wanted to share a video of our writing center. Um, Melissa Batulovitz is our literacy coach and she's also the director of the writing center. And, um, the writing center, uh, is really a model designed to train students to help other students. Uh, uh, peer modeling. Uh, I think she has 37 trained, uh, uh, peer, uh, mentors, uh, coaches, um, in grade six, seven and eight. Uh, and the center is designed to support students, uh, who need extra help, uh, or desire another set of eyes, uh, to partner and coach with. Uh, and so Larry, I don't know if you want to share a little more before we show the video?
Yeah. So actually I had to, I had the opportunity to see firsthand, um, the professional learning and development that, uh, our 37 students engaged in over the last month. So, um, Melissa tries to run the professional learning similar to what our teachers experience. So they, they have a pullout time. It's a, it's a two-hour work session where they're focused on, on learning new skills and how to collaborate and communicate and work with others. Um, and so our students apply to be a part of this program. And, um, it's really exciting because it really brings to life our five Cs. Um, this is a really authentic time and experience. And so our students, um, that would like some support, they can sign up for the writing center during X Block. This is an open opportunity for all grade levels each day. They can sign up and they get that support. And it's not just their ELA classes where they're getting writing support. Um, that extends to science and social studies and mathematics as well as needed. So, uh, we're really proud of the program, um, that Melissa had launched several years ago, um, in conjunction with her own training through UConn. Um, and, and there is a connection to E O Smith because our students end up, uh, doing this program at the high school as well. So we're, it's something we're really proud of.
So a, a student produced a commercial that was shown, uh, to other students to promote the writing center. Oh, I'm gonna, is there sound?
Well, the writing center is a cool place that you can come to work on your writing. So when you come to the writing center, you can expect to be greeted by many friendly coaches and to be working in a very quiet and spacious and comfortable spot because it's a cafe.
Hi.
Hello. Welcome to Writing Center.
So the writing space coaches can pretty much help you with anything.
Hi, um, so we're creating all the mystery piece about regions.
And we signed up for an appointment.
Here's the table.
The Writing Center coaches can help you with any piece of writing, whether it's schoolwork, brainstorming, or ending your story.
Literally anything that has to do with writing. We're here for you.
It, it can be poetry, anything.
Here are your input forms.
Thanks.
They'll help me with your writing.
Thank you.
There are so many nice coaches here.
They can help you with almost anything because they're all trained.
Now I'm gonna ask you to read a piece aloud.
Okay.
Jinx. Jinx now. Okay. So our piece is about a boy.
It's about a boy who turns into a rabid.
And they can help you with anything you need and we always try to make you feel good about yourself.
He loves writing fantasy.
I love fiction.
The writing space coaches can help you with a lot of different things, including History Day and things like LA projects. They can also help you with like stuff you're doing for fun.
Wow, it was a really good story. But we liked your hook at the beginning. It's very nice.
Thank you.
What would you like to work on?
You should never be nervous to ask for help. I know that I have in the past and it just has gotten me nowhere. If you don't ask for help, the truth is you're never gonna get better.
What do you think might be some traits that you could add to him?
You cannot be a better writer if you do not learn anything. And part of learning is asking for help when you need it.
Humor.
Humor.
Humorous, yeah.
It's really fun talking to other people about writing.
Adventurous?
Yeah, adventurous.
And it's just nice to, uh, be able to help people.
That is the five-minute countdown. We have five minutes left. I think we made amazing work today. I think your character has a lot more emotions and characters and traits. I think it worked out awesome.
To sign up for the Writing Center is easy.
To sign up, you book an appointment on Clever. There is a blue icon with a pencil on it. It'll lead you to a Google Calendar. There, the Google Calendar will pop up on Ms. Batulovitz's side. We also welcome walk-ins, but it's better to sign up on the Google Calendar to ensure that you get a coach.
You can come to the Writing Center at X Block.
It's open Monday through Thursday. If you have a jam-packed X Block like me, you can come during your lunch to coach or even just to get help from a coach.
You should definitely not be nervous to sign up for the Writing Center.
Once they get here, I think they feel much more comfortable. And I think the writing space becomes a place where you can come if you need to work on something or just a place you can come for fun if you don't have anywhere else to go.
Hire a coach. During independent work sessions, you can hire a coach or two to help support the students in your classroom. This is a new program we've started this year.
Um, I really enjoyed the calm and relaxing, um, part of the Writing Center.
It's a calm place that you can come to if you have like an essay that you have to do or any missing assignments. And I know that from my experience that there are a lot of good coaches that can help you.
I can get my work done and that I can just work on whatever when I, when I don't have anything specific to do.
My favorite part about the Writing Center is probably Ms. Batulovitz. She's really extravagant and funny and kind.
I only have good things to say about the Writing Center. Like the people here are really nice and kind, especially the teachers. They're gonna help you with anything that you want.
There's a lot of friendly people, obviously.
There's a lot of friendly coaches to work with and it's a really quiet space and environment where you can do homework and work on any writing piece. And sometimes Mrs. Batulovitz will bring you snacks while you're working.
And you have a choice if you want to work with people or not.
Have a one-on-one.
You don't have to come here to work with, uh, like a coach. You can literally just come here to like write. It's the writing space, you know?
Hi, everybody. Um, my name is Mrs. Batulovitz and I'm the founder and director of the Writing Center. We are very, very excited about the Writing Center, um, here at the middle school because there aren't many middle school writing centers. And we are very lucky to have the one that we have here at Mansfield Middle School. So please come in, check out the cafe, meet the coaches, and I look forward to meeting you all and your writing needs. Thanks.
Yeah, any of the yo-yo people out there, you can.
Uh, but you definitely get a flavor. Uh, it just is an impressive, um, commercial, but program that's full of student agency. The five Cs of how they collaborate, communicate, support each other. This is what we want our classrooms to look like and our schools, uh, to be inviting, to give kids voice and choice. Uh, and really when you think about, uh, students working with other students, uh, the, uh, just the level of confidence, uh, and capability that they have, uh, just increases greatly, uh, with these opportunities. So I applaud Larry and certainly Melissa and her team for, uh, for building that. So, thank you. I'm gonna try to get out of this, uh, and get back to.
Peter?
Yeah. Jeanette?
You mentioned UConn. I just wondered how connected you were to the program that's in place at E O Smith for quite a while, which goes along with the UConn Riders Workshop.
Yeah. Yeah. So the, uh, so we were similar trainers, um, that E O Smith worked with and our, and Melissa certainly connects with some of the staff there, um, over time. Um, but yeah, we, we were trained to the same people and program and process at UConn. Yep.
Yep.
Does, uh, Doug Kaufman still work at the elementary school with doing writing programs and stuff?
Uh, Doug, um, uh, was on sabbatical, I, uh, for a little bit. Um, he was a good one when I was there, uh, and paused, but I just met with him. Uh, Candace Moreland and I talked about how can we, uh, bring Doug and, and UConn back into using our schools after hours? Uh, and, um, lean into those people that have worked with our staff in the past. So, yep.
I know he was working on some study and, and had these ki- kids writing these really phenomenal books. Unfortunately, parents didn't get them.
Heard you that. Yeah. Great. Thank you, Larry. Uh, so just a couple of other events that I just wanted to highlight. Um, our, our new food service director, Mariah Papaleski-Tilly, uh, has led to just really important events and she's collaborated across Mansfield, uh, to do this. Uh, we had a plastic-free lunch day, um, where, uh, we actually had an entire lunch period where we did not use plastic. And those, uh, families that don't participate in our food service program, they also leaned into it. I saw a couple of emails where families were asking, uh, would Tupperware be okay? And, you know, there were great conversations of reusable containers. Uh, you just wouldn't believe how hard it is to produce a plastic-free lunch. So, uh, we've had a taste of that and we're gonna keep going with it. And then apple crunch. We had third graders participating at Goodwin in, uh, the Apple Crunch Challenge, which was a, a national program. Uh, they were eating apples that were locally grown from a horse listener's orchard. Uh, and that was in partnership with Taste of Mansfield and, uh, really promoting that, uh, local on your tray. You know, we want our kids to have access to healthy, locally grown products. And so Mariah's just doing an amazing job, uh, and I look forward to having her come to the board and, and talk to you about, uh, more of her programs. We had professional learning on Election Day, uh, and engaged our staff, uh, in many, many different ways. We had more work, uh, on the data dashboard, trauma-informed practices. Again, lifting SEL up, uh, action planning and practices. Um, we had the environmental team that was part of the plastic-free, uh, day. Uh, they wanted, uh, some time to meet, uh, teachers, were goal-setting, uh, curriculum planning. And, and we met with, uh, teacher leaders. It was a super engaging day. Uh, and, uh, plenty of evidence of how we, uh, grow our educators and how we all lead, uh, learning. Uh, and so many of this, uh, many of these opportunities were led by our building-level administrators and teacher leaders. So very proud to see that.
Peter, could you say a couple of words about the trauma-informed practices and what that's all about?
Sure. So, uh, trauma-informed practices has been, um, first of all, it's part of the SEL Institute work, so social-emotional learning. Uh, and trauma-informed practices really come from a large body of work, uh, that one recognizes that many of our students, and to be honest with you, many of our community members have experienced trauma. Uh, what we know about trauma-informed practices is that when a student has experienced trauma, very often, uh, they present behaviors that are dysregulated, uh, that are challenging in the learning environment. And so trauma-informed practices or a trauma-informed school recognizes that we very often have to think about creating environments that feel safe and predictable for students who have experienced trauma. And trauma could be, you know, the loss of a loved one, a, a house fire, um, that they've moved, uh, that there's some food insecurities. Uh, it can be, you know, many, many different things that create that trauma. But really we're lifting up practices, uh, that our teachers can use in the classroom that, um, support students that may be exhibiting behaviors that are, that have a root cause, uh, with trauma. Uh, and, um, I think I'm still on for the agenda, uh, moving on. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Great. So I'm gonna invite Principal Lauren Rodriguez up. Uh, and so, uh, excited to see the Mansfield Elementary School project move forward. Uh, and, uh, we, uh, are utilizing, uh, our, uh, interim administrative, uh, person that was helping Danielle and Larry at the middle school has also shifted over to Goodwin to give Lauren and Becky some time, uh, to really start digging in deep and thinking about that move-in date and what that looks like. Uh, and so you know from the community communications and what I've shared with the board that having a substantial completion of the building doesn't simply mean kids move in the next day. There's a, a whole list of things that have to happen that we have to, first of all, get that, uh, certificate of occupancy. We have to think about installing and moving new furniture. And we just learned today that that could go through, uh, January. Uh, Lauren needs to think about the training and the visitation of having her staff, uh, enter into the building. Thinking how we want to engage our families, uh, again, that transportation plans. And then really getting into the details of what it looks like, uh, at the teacher-student end of it. Do you want to share a little more?
Yeah. Um, so first off, I, um, it's been a great start at our, our new two campuses and, uh, building shared practices. Um, Peter's introduction, uh, to some of the, uh, work ahead is, is accurate. You know, we do have teachers who ha- actually haven't stepped foot inside of the building yet. It's hard to imagine how you create a space that you're gonna not only move into, but know how to work with if you haven't spent time in the building. So, um, knowing that we're going to make some space to be able to not only get the certificate of occupancy, have the furniture built, but get to a place where, uh, staff will feel comfortable to know all the parts. You know, if you, uh, think about it and involves, uh, what do we do with the emergency drills to where's the bathroom? Um, where am I, how am I setting up my classroom? Where am I putting my things? So there's a lot of pieces to it, um, and staff, uh, understands that this is a transition, but they're also anxious to start to imagine themselves in this, uh, your awesome space. Uh, so, um, this is also true for students. Uh, it's another big transition for them and, uh, we would like to have the students be able to come, see their classrooms, see it set up, start to feel their own, um, comfort in knowing what the space is. Um, you know, our new palace. It's, it's so gorgeous. Um, and, uh, you know, it extends to, uh, Mrs. Granatini and myself, um, having time in the building to be able to see the building and understand the building, develop plans. Um, you know, simple things, emergency exit plans, um, you know, how to create those fire drill maps and, uh, all the different pieces that go into making sure you have a school that's up and ready and running. Um, these are the things that really need to take place in addition to developing the new schedule um, and making sure that everyone understands how, uh, that is going to work. Um, so I can, I can assure you, it'll be a busy few months, um, So I can, I can assure you, it'll be a busy few months, um, you know, getting to that space. All while we're, uh, continuing to run school and, uh, have students learn and grow and prosper, um, in the environment that, that we currently have. Um, but I think this, uh, this transition planning really takes into account all of the different pieces to make sure that we're thoughtful of our stakeholders. And we're not putting anyone in a position where it's, you know, too, too difficult, um, you know, for them to be able to access. It's going to be new, but there's also an excitement. I can tell you in these first few months, having the school separate and having staff in one half and the other half. This is the language. People can't wait to, uh, you know, the upper grades can't wait to see the preschoolers and the kindergartners again, um, and for staff to be reunited. So there is a, a real burning of, um, just excitement waiting to, waiting to get there. Uh, there's also, I, I just want to speak to the very last slide. In terms of a soft staggered opening, there are some conversation and discussion around how do we slowly move everyone? So it's not a, a drop in date that everyone goes at exactly the first, uh, you know, the first opening date. We believe this will be helpful so we can provide a really personalized experience for the grade levels as they're, uh, newly arriving onto campus.
So when we have that final substantial completion date and we have a better sense as to when is the targeted, uh, date of those final few events? Uh, know that I'll need to come back to the board to think about how do we support our elementary staff members? Keep in mind that they have had to teach longer than we anticipated. In fact, some of them are getting boxes back because we were sure they wouldn't need them in November and now they do. So how do they pack up while teaching in their current location? Uh, how do we get things ready for the professional movers who hopefully magically over a weekend will do that? And then allow teachers to move into a brand new school, brand new classroom, and start to organize instructional materials and get ready for, to receive students. We know it's going to take extraordinary efforts. Uh, we don't want that to create trauma, uh, you know, thinking about trauma informed practices. But we know it's going to be a challenging, um, uh, transition. Um, and so we'll, uh, come back and we'll talk more about that. We're going to look for a natural break in our calendar to think about when that happens. Um, my commitment to Lauren and her team, and certainly to the staff members. Um, I don't want to rush into this. I know that it's important to get into that building. We've been waiting too long for it, but we can wait to make sure that it's appropriate and that we do it right. Uh, and so that our staff members feel whole and prepared. And that our students feel whole and prepared and our families feel whole and prepared. Uh, and so we'll have to wait to get that substantial completion. And then we'll map that out and, and I will bring, bring that back to the board to consider how we best support our teachers. Kelly?
Um, so I think it's great. You know, I'm very much in favor of a transition plan. I want to say to you, Lauren, that, um, I love that you strive for perfection, but if it's not perfect, it's okay. And I think your teachers all need that message too, right? Because until you're actually living in the space, you're not going to know the space. So I would advocate to you, um, Superintendent Dart, that looking ahead at the calendar. If you can build in some time in PD days, once staff have been in there for a little while, for them to have some time to reflect, maybe make changes to their initial setups. I really think that this is a big lift and that teachers will be more successful overall if they have a little bit of breathing room. And we're really, really mindful of our PDs and we're ahead of the game with what we offer. So I think maybe having a breath with some of that, um, can allow for some room for people to make some adjustments as well.
And I would just add that setting up a room is professional learning. It, it is. We shouldn't feel guilty about, uh, using professional learning time for a teacher to engage in their ecology, their, their space to think about how it interacts.
That's good trauma informed practices. Like we need to create safe and predictable spaces for everyone. So that's good.
Jeanette?
Jeanette.
So moving beyond those other things, just in practical terms. How will you give teachers the time to actually do that moving?
So we'll come back, uh, with that. So, uh, hypothetically, if we were ready, and this is hypothetical, right? I don't have that, but you know that I shared, uh, with the community that we have a, uh, construction company that believes that they are going to get their C O at the end of December. So if that were the case, and what we now know about F F and E, that's the furniture fixtures and equipment. Uh, that will be arriving staggered throughout January, early February. We might be able to look at February break, which has a professional learning day on Friday. Has a long weekend. And so, uh, you know that we've talked about the calendar and we've built, uh, over time, uh, a con, a collective bargaining agreement with our teachers that we will teach 182 days, but the state only requires 180. So, uh, I would like to think about that 181st day. We've already used one because of transportation, but perhaps to think about what would Wednesday look like if that was a setup day for our, um, staff members? And then that would leave Thursday and Friday. And that would be perfect for a staggered opening. And I don't know if you recall during the pandemic, but we had a Thursday, Friday where we had one school, uh, or some grade levels come in on Thursday and some grade levels come in on Friday. So it's a staggered soft opening and then we would have a full opening, uh, the following week. We need time, right? Just buses alone, cars, parking, where do I walk in? All of those things. Um, so that's all hypothetical. That's one model. But that's a tight timeline, given what I just heard at our building committee meeting. Uh, so I think we have to just wait. Uh, we also have, you know, perhaps a tipping point of when do we say that it's just too late to consider moving in this year? Uh, you know, that would be a worst case scenario, but maybe it's a best case scenario. I, I don't know. We don't know until, uh, the building committee, um, rustles with, uh, the final completion, the final stages. We get our C O, uh, and then we, uh, are able to kind of backwards plan into the building. Uh, I do want to just lift up that we have so many teachers and programs that are getting kids ready. Uh, being the environmental stewards that they need to be. They are so excited. Uh, and remember that school is more than a building. Uh, and so we're, we have a, a net zero mentality already. Uh, I applaud our teacher leaders who've stepped up. You know, the two teachers, uh, Jen Zugarazzo is one of them. Uh, from, uh, Denmark comes these amazing ideas, uh, including the, uh, zero, uh, plastic day and, and other ideas. So, uh, we know our enrichment teachers, we have the environmental club caring for our environment and the green leaf schools training, which, uh, is really exciting stuff.
Uh, so just on this past professional development day, we had three teachers, um, the, uh, STEM teachers as well as, um, Senora Zugarazzo, uh, who attended, uh, fabulous training, uh, to learn a little bit about the green leaf schools initiative, which is this, uh, state of Connecticut, um, initiative. And basically, um, we are interested in doing this. So we have to do a little bit of an assessment, maybe make a commitment as a school, um, uh, to be able to move forward. And what this really says is that we're looking to improve the lives of our students and our staff, um, by caring for the environment. These are, um, you know, ideals that so closely are, uh, en- ingrained in what we do. Um, so we are, we are looking to, uh, move forward down that path. Um, may take a few months, but, uh, we feel like it's really in line with what, not only our school building, but our values as a community, um, you know, so we look forward to that. And some of this work is already happening. This picture on the left, uh, we have a class that, um, you know, uh, decided that they wanted to, uh, be the stewards of this garden. And in preparation of the kind of work that will be happening at the new building. Um, they, uh, tended to the garden. They've been beautifying it. They've been adding different things. They, uh, had made scarecrows, brought in some pumpkins and, you know, it's a centerpiece when you walk through the building. And this is a first grade class, you know? Um, so it's a reminder that, uh, there are all sorts of different projects that are underway at Mansfield Elementary. Um, and this work really, uh, is about empowering students to, to lead the work. And, uh, that's exactly what, uh, we want to see them do with the environment. We're continuing a partnership with Chris Kiefern. Many of you know the name, uh, Chris works with, um, current, he's, he's a member of the school building committee. He's been a very active, uh, participant. Chris, uh, spent last year training our third grade students on how to give tours for the new building and talk about the features of the building. We're not in the building, but that work is still there. So if it happens that we're able to move in, we're really looking forward, you know, the training is, has been done and the students are ready. Um, but, uh, he, he has made it back on campus to continue the conversations with the fourth graders. And we're talking about what it looks like as we continue to roll out this program. So, um, we are, we are pleased with, uh, the, the momentum that we have right now working, uh, for the environment. Thanks. Any questions?
Um, I hesitate to even ask this, but is there going to be an opportunity for the board to see the school at some point?
I hope so.
I'd be happy to, uh, give tours, uh, or we could have Chris do that. And so, um, I'll work with Kathy to, uh, create. I think there was some tours, uh, in June, right? Or in the spring at some point. So we could follow a similar model and, and offer up some times.
I think we were told that there were too many of us to, to go at that time. So maybe it's okay now. They have enough hard hats?
Uh, seven is the number I was told. Seven hard hats.
I think with the, um, discussions that are going to be going on, that are going on already in the community would be really helpful for us as, uh, board members to see really in the flesh what we're talking about.
Agreed. Catherine?
Yeah, I, the other thing too is like, there's always been the discussion of, you know, if there's more than five people, does it constitute a meeting? So let's just do tours of four people or tours of three people and that way we can all get in and see it.
Yeah. Happy to do it. Uh, it's exciting and I'd love for you to see it. Great. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren.
Uh, and so concludes my, uh, report. Thank you.
Would you just like to roll into proposed Board of Education calendar?
Sure, but I, I'll let you take the lead on it. How's that?
Sure. Okay. We have in front of us, everybody has in their packet, the proposed Board of Education calendar for 2023. And as you may have seen, we are recommending a starting time of 6:30. Tonight is the first read. We did put, uh, that we were going to move on this tonight, but that was an error because we did not have the other, the last October meeting, which is when we should have had the first read. So we need to wait until the next meeting to have the second read and do the vote. So there'll be no vote on it tonight. Yes.
Uh, one date issue I noticed is Thursday, the seventh is Hanukkah.
Uh, are you sure about that? Because I had to move it to the seventh to avoid Hanukkah. So I may have made an error, but uh, let's just double check. I, I can double check that later, but let me see if I can Google it quickly because I is it? Okay. For the 23rd.
December 7, 2023. It's a Thursday.
Okay.
Hanukkah begins at sunset.
Okay. Thank you.
So a question on, um, February 2nd, it's only the two, uh, meetings that are noted there and not also a regular meeting in addition, or is there a regular meeting in addition? Okay. February 2nd.
No, there's no regular meeting.
Okay.
No. Any other questions?
I believe we have to take a vote on changing the time of the Board of Ed meeting.
Well, I think that's what, after the first read. Okay. Next time around.
Okay.
Can I ask, when is April vacation this year? Uh, calendar school year?
In this particular one?
It doesn't fall over that 20th date, does it? I think it typically does. That's why I'm wondering.
It is the week of, uh,
It's the week before that. Okay. That's early, right?
All right. Any other questions about the calendar? We'll vote on this December meeting. Uh, I think you already went over the elementary school transition plan, correct? Do you have?
I just, uh, just quick updates with the new building project. You might be thrilled to hear that the generator has shipped and the geother- the heat's on in the building. Uh, the parking lot's in, so we're not talking about those things anymore. Um, there are some critical path issues, uh, so final site work in the A2 survey. You may remember, um, Superintendent Lyman talking about the A2 survey. That's the final checklist, uh, you know, landscaping, roadways, the final survey. Uh, that needs to be checked off. That's a, you know, a, a town inspection. Uh, so we want to make sure that's ready. The flooring, we do have, um, a solution. We're seeing flooring, uh, getting installed. So we've, uh, worked around the concrete issue and, and just the final finishing work. Uh, I did want to show a final video. Um, Lauren talked about Chris Kiefern.
Just while you're on the boring subject, there were core samples taken. Did we get the results of those core samples of the cement?
So, uh, we did not get our samples back. However, the co- uh, the construction company Newfield shared the report with us from their tests. Uh, and so it was inconclusive in terms of whether it was, um, the cause of carbon dioxide being introduced in the final curing of the concrete. So this will, this is going to be important because we want to verify that with our own independent, uh, test. Because, uh, sometimes there's inherently, um, maybe a bias or a favoritism, uh, in testing. So we just want to verify it with our own tests. How that plays out will be a process, um, in terms of how significant that was and whether that was an issue, uh, related to, uh, to, um, something that the construction company, uh, is responsible for.
So we're expecting this independent test, the results of that in a month or something?
Uh, I, last I checked, it was like two months out.
Oh, two months out. Okay.
So, but the, uh, Newfield Construction Company, based on their sampling and working with the, um, the company that makes the, uh, adhesive and the flooring. They worked out an agreement and a solution to shop blast the floor, remove just a, a thin layer. They're using Latticrete, which is a leveller that seals it. And then provides a, an adequate surface for the adhesive and, and final flooring. And so that's what they're doing right now, uh, and they already have several rooms completed.
Yes. Um, one of the things they noticed in the, um, photos shown last time was the fact that, um, the built-in, uh, they're built-ins already on top of this concrete floor. So how do we resolve the fact that there's dusting underneath?
So the, the dusting is nothing that you would have to, it's not structural. It's nothing environmental. Uh, dusting is just a term that they use that, um, prevents the adhesive from sticking. So because that's already kind of encapsulated by the cabinet, we're not going to put flooring underneath those cabinets that are already installed.
Okay. I was just reading something written by a materials engineer. And, um, there is concern about, uh, the elements, uh, and the health hazards of breathing in cement dust. And, um, so I was concerned, it brought me back to seeing those built-ins. And I thought, jeez, if you open a cabinet door, you might be having dust come up. I, I'm not, I don't know.
Yeah, no, it's, it's totally encapsulated.
You know, it's like asbestos, you know, I mean, it's not good for your lungs.
Yeah.
So I'm concerned about that.
So, uh, I would like to show this video, uh, so we've been talking about So we've been talking about communication. And one thing that we've learned was that we needed to share more information about where the project is and, and what the, what it looks like. This came out of the family advisory conversations. And so we've asked Chris to create a series of videos that we will share through social media, we'll push out to our families. And I'd like to just show you this first installment.
Some people don't do social media, so we'll be on the website?
It'll be on the website, and we'll also email it through School Messenger.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Kiefner, and today you're joining me on a video visit of the new Net Zero School in Mansfield. Today, we're going to zip around the inside of the school, look at some of the major spaces, and take a look at some of the highlights outdoors, too. Let's go. So here's where we're all going to be coming in. This is the main entrance. We'll, we'll go in this way. Actually, there's a second main entrance. This is the main entrance for the first, second, and third and fourth grades. But right over there is the entrance for kindergarten and pre-K. They'll have their own entrance, but this is all coming off of the bus loop. If you look a little further to the right, you'll see where a parent drop-off is for kids who don't ride their bikes or take the bus. So they'll come in over there and still go into one of these two doors. But let's go on in the school. The first thing you'll come to is the office. And here it is, the reception area. And you'll see, you'll see the standard makes it look like a school office with all those memo boxes, even though email is pretty common now. There's still paper used. And that door there is to the nurse's office. And then down this other hallway, there's a meeting room right here. And then down this hallway will be the principal's office, and assistant principal's office, and then another meeting room. So the office. Coming back out into the hallway, the main hallway, we've got the Library Media Center right here with a makerspace as well in the corner, really neat glass area for the makerspace. And one fun thing about the library and media center is these skylights. And see that guy's working on fine-tuning the taping in there? This will all be with, you know, have books and shelves and so forth in here, and work areas. Coming out into the bigger open space, holy mackerel, you can see down into the cafeteria. This is the cafeteria and kind of a commons area. On the left, those windows are for the library. And so they get some of this natural light. Even though the library is on the north side of the building, it's getting light from the clear-story windows all the way through the building and on the north side. Pretty nice. Down on the bottom, you can see the, what's called the servery or the kitchen area. There'll be two lines of, two lines for the kids to, to get food. And then kind of beyond that is the preparation area that we can't quite see in the dishes and so forth. And coming on over this way is a big staircase. And if we go right to this, to this junction here and take a look down this hall, the hallway to the right is going to be, is kindergarten and pre-K, or in reverse order, pre-K and then kindergarten beyond, and with, as well as some offices. And then doing a 180-degree turn, you're looking down into the first-grade hall. And the first-grade hall then connects to the second-grade hall. And downstairs, it's the same thing with the third and the fourth grade. What we couldn't see from upstairs, from that balcony, we looked into the cafeteria, which I'm looking into now. But if you look off the cafeteria, you'll see the gymnasium. And right now in the gymnasium, they've got all the flooring ready, it's acclimating. There's underlayment, boards that go underneath the final floor. And we're going to get a wood floor in here, which should be nice. There's also a stage in here, as you can see. And another nice feature is right off the cafeteria, there is a patio, which will have tables and so forth. So on a nice day, maybe even a day like today, you could eat outside. And it can also be used as classroom space when it's appropriate. This area is going to have raised, raised beds for growing vegetables and other plants. It'll have some work tables and benches. It'll be another classroom area outside, but where teachers can do science, kids can do science, and, and learn about growing plants. Here's a nice patio area that comes, there's a door from the art room. So one clear use of it would be for art classes, but it can be also a classroom space and a gathering area. We've got all these papers these guys are working on. And should be a very pleasant spot to, to learn and work. What we're looking at here is the pre-K playground. It'll be a separate fenced area, separate from the older kids, but accessible right off of their, right off of this wing. And I thought a good place to end would be at the playground. Here, we've got some playground equipment that kind of extends, and it's actually designed for different ages of kids and sizes. And then right in the next area will be a basketball, basketball hoop, and then beyond that, some open fields. So thanks very much for visiting with me today on our little video visit. I hope you'll join us again, and we'll learn some more about the building.
Just in this, these, this short video, I didn't see a lot of access for wheelchairs. Like, when I, he shared the stage, and I, I'm sure part of it was blocked.
Yeah.
And I didn't see an elevator, which that was, probably wasn't part of the video. I just, I didn't notice that the wheelchair accessible, and I assume the playground also.
Very much so. Yeah, so it's, it has to be ADA compliant. But that's a great topic for maybe another video that he can show, like, you know, how the building is designed for everybody. So thank you for pointing that out. But I assure you that there are ample areas, the pathways, there are certain regulations even on the, how steep a pathway can be to make sure that anyone who's in a wheelchair can have access to it and that it's safe.
April?
I just wanted to say it's a great video. It makes it so much easier than trying to picture in my head to actually see it. And I, I think it's really going to help teachers and students and families and even it's the community.
Right, great. It, it's a week old, and so I'm actually kind of surprised that it's so much more, like, all those outdoor areas are almost done now. So things are going very quickly. So maybe there's a little danger in doing some of these videos, but it takes a while to get them produced.
Since the first advisory committee, several parents requested a 360 view of the restrooms. Could that possibly be the next video?
We're waiting for the bathroom to be finished. It is not a priority of the contractors. And so I was just there this morning, and it's still kind of in limbo. So as soon as it's ready for the camera, then we definitely will do that.
Okay, maybe the contractor needs to know that it's a priority of our parents.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. MMS?
Oh, yep, if I can get back to the PowerPoint. Great, thank you. And then just another good news. So this generator is ready for shipment in December. The switchgear will come in November. The switchgear is a piece of technology that allows the solar panels to be energized and then to shut them down when the generator kicks on. So we're really good to go, and we're glad we have that roof project for tomorrow's rain. And so we'll definitely give it a test, test drive. So thank you.
Any questions about MMS? Okay, thank you, Peter.
Yep, thanks.
We don't have any new, new business. That brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to approach the board? Hi, Jeremiah.
Hi, I'll, I'll say Jeremiah Mott again, 100 Wormwood Hill. Thank you. No, this is, who says that a board meeting has to be boring? There's a lot of excitement, a lot of excitement going on. It's great. Thank you. The first thing that I wanted to say is thank you for honoring the veterans, me being one. I, I feel I'm very special about, about that. You know, I, I, I served not during wartime, but, you know, I still feel, I still feel honored. And it brings life back, and I hope that, that continues on this tradition with our school systems. I was very impressed with the writing center coaching. I had to text my wife, because I know my daughter Grace at the middle school was telling me about it, but I, I couldn't remember exactly what it was she was doing. She's being coached to be a coach. So that's exciting news. And I'm really excited that Elijah, my son, in third grade this year will get a chance to be in the, the new school for at least one year, sounds like. Sorry, I took some notes. The transportation, it sounds like it's going very well. So I appreciate all the hard work the Transportation Committee and everyone has done on that. Especially the GPS app, looks really exciting. The calendars, yes, we should incorporate, you know, people in our community, but I definitely don't want to forget the holidays we have and the traditions that we have in our community already as well. I, I do tech for, for UConn, and so I might steal the Tech Tip Tuesday, whoever's idea that was. To help move into the new school quicker, would you be willing to have families come help set up classrooms with the teachers? You can discuss that another time.
Yes, we'll be in touch.
Great.
It's a non-paid position, though.
Never mind. Just kidding, just kidding. I think that's it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Jeremiah. Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, April. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Catherine. All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. That looks unanimous. Thank you very much. Any suggestions for future agenda items? Yes?
I have noticed in the emails, you guys have been sending out information regarding the counselors. So if at some point we can get an update on how our kids are doing, would be great.
With the school counselors?
Yeah. For, for their mental health and the, you know, COVID and all the rest of that.
Anything else? All right, that brings us to executive session. Thank you, Mr. Dart. Thank you, Jill. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Jill. No, I'm sorry.